Please rise for the pledge. Roll call, please.
Counselor Sanchez, Counselor Richards, Counselor Augsburg, Counselor Thorston,
Here.
Counselor Hegi.
Here.
Counselor Bronson.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Present. Let the record show that there are seven present and zero absent. Moving on, our consent agenda includes Robert's Rules of Orders and City Council handbook. So I'm going to hand it off to staff.
Yeah, and also going to be some updates on council goals that council had set this last year as well as city manager goals. Anyway, welcome. Excited to work with all of you here in the near future and get you all, all the new people sworn in next week. Just wanted to let you all know, just as a reminder, next Tuesday, we also have a work session prior to our council meeting. That's going to be going over, we want your feedback on levy language. So we have a couple of levies that are coming up here in the next year. So we have the library levy and the PD levy. So we want to get your feedback on that as well as rates for those levies. So we, the plan is to get those on the ballot for the May election. Even though they, those particular levies don't expire until next year in June, I believe it is, right? Cecily, is that right?
Yeah.
Next June. Also, the work session is going to include, and I'm confirming with our finance director if he's available for this, but I want him to kind of give you all a municipal finance overview because we're going to get ready to head into budget season. And so just kind of want to give you all kind of a high level, this is what to expect, so. Also, as far as communication goes, in the, since I've been doing this, I haven't sent out a whole lot of emails to council because council has preferred, for the most part, phone calls or text messages. So it's kind of all up to you. I'm going to continue just to communicate with you all via text message and phone calls. And if you all want something different, if you want more email communication, just let me know. But the main thing is I'm going to keep you in the loop and so that you're in the know. So I tried to work hard at doing that the last six months or so. So anyway, just wanted to throw that out there as well. So yeah, tonight, we're going to be taking a look at, I'm going to start off with council goals for this last year. Just kind of give you a brief update on that as well as city manager goals. I'm going to hand that off after I'm done with that to Cecily. She's going to talk about your workbook that she put together. And then Blair is going to be doing our Robert's Rules of Order. So I know that next Tuesday might feel a little bit overwhelming. So I just wanted to let you all know that, you know, what we're talking about tonight is just to kind of prepare you and make you feel a little bit more comfortable with next Tuesday. And again, don't feel like you have to have all of the answers and have everything put together next Tuesday. If you have questions about procedure or whatever, please just say something. I mean, we're all learning here and we're all trying to figure it out and want to do the best job that we can. So please, you know, if you have a question next Tuesday about something procedurally, please ask. And, you know, those on council who have been doing this for a little bit will be able to guide us as well, so. Okay, so our city council goals that you all had this last year. I included the vision statement in there just to the left of our first slide. And that is, we as a city council have been entrusted to make decisions that do the most good for the most people for the longest period of time to enhance the quality of life in our community. And then within that vision statement, there are several bullet points in there, and that's what we're going to be going through. So last, this last year, one of those council goals under the bullet point of infrastructure, we have several in there, some, several big ones. So the first one is the emergency generator for the water treatment plant. So that one is, is just about completed. So we've applied for and received $800,000 through a grant. And the only thing left that we have to do with that at this point is to put together a process for the reimbursement. So, so it's a grant reimbursement, so we have to, you know, put in the, the work upfront. But we do, I think we might do an RFP for that to, to see it through. Yeah. So that is that one. The Eighth Avenue Water Main Replacement Funding was another council goals, or another council goal under infrastructure. That one, unfortunately, we do not have funding for that project. However, I've been in conversation with Blake, who is our engineering tech. He's actually not worried about this at this time. There are other larger fish to fry in the infrastructure department for the city. And he's pretty confident that we can keep up with some of the stuff that needs to be done on that Eighth Avenue Main Replacement. So at this time, no funding, but we're not really worried about that as we have some other larger projects on the list that would take precedent. Another council goal was Pleasant Valley Road Investigation with ODOT. And that one in particular is pretty obvious. The community and council and staff has found that that intersection is a dangerous intersection. It's very difficult for people to turn off of Pleasant Valley onto Main Street there. So we can work towards this and approach ODOT once we get our traffic safety plan finalized and adopted. That's not saying that they will actually do something about it, but I can tell you that in the traffic safety plan, we have included that as an area of concern in it. So that will be good. And once we get that finalized, then we can start to have some conversations with ODOT to see if there is anything that they're willing to do about that intersection. So we're getting there, and I think it'll be important to have that in that plan because it wasn't in there before, I don't think. The next one under infrastructure is the City Hall Park Construction. So just right next door here, the lot to the east of us. We just, that's on hold right now due to funding. The other one is Forty Second Avenue and Osage Park Construction. That is also on hold due to funding. As most of you know, we cleared out that area. One of the things we don't want to happen out there is for the brush to grow up again. So we will be making sure that that stays down. We are also working on a grant right now for that park. I can't remember, I think it's close to the amount of $40,000 or some, something close to that. So we're hopeful that we can get this grant so we can put in some things out there and start to develop that, so. So that's that. Sankey Park Improvements was another infrastructure one. The final design for that is expected in the next few months. And so once that's completed, we'll put in a request for a proposal for construction services. So we're moving forward on that, pretty excited. And then the Weddell Bridge Improvements. We have a grant from the Sweet Home Community Foundation, but we need an extension on that because we need to determine, you know, what exactly we need to do moving forward. And we're not quite ready to utilize that. So it's there, we just need to file for an extension. So that's infrastructure. There was a lot of stuff in infrastructure. The next one, the next slide falls under the category of effective and efficient government. And so that one, one of your goals last year was council rules update. Just, there were some efforts to update that last year during a work session, but that kind of stalled out with no final direction provided. And you probably, probably recall that. So the plan is to revisit the council rules in the spring here, bring it back to you all for discussion and potential action. So that's the only one we have under that one. The next slide is under the bullet point of rejuvenate essential services. So we have two things there. One of the council goals was to have the emergency management plan updates. Happy to say that this item is completed. I recently developed a, what they call a continuity of operations plan, a COOP that ensures the city will maintain essential services during emergencies. So that is complete. The other one under there is the new library construction. Happy to announce that the library did receive about 355, almost $356,000 from an estate. So, so, and I think it was like, wasn't this like the second of, of monies from that estate? So that finally came in. So the library's been kind of building up their pot and planning for the future. So we've been currently kind of investigating options for that. So that's where we're at with that. The next one is under the heading of economic strength. You can see we have several there. Downtown vacancy reduction was one goal that council had. The one thing that we have there is Ridgeway Health has occupied the old city hall, which was previously vacant. So that's, that's good. We made some progress there. The downtown design standards, we had a work session that was held in June of 2024. However, there was no recommendation or direction that was provided by council at that time. So this is, this has remained tabled since that time unless council wants to prioritize that in the future for one of their goals. Land acquisition, as you all know, we completed that with the purchase of the old feed store there on the corner of Long and Thirteenth Avenue. And we were pretty excited about that as that is our future Festival Street. So we don't have any plans at the moment for that building, but we are hopeful that we can get something going with that in the near future. The last one for economic strength is the grant acquisition. Council had a goal that the city would try to acquire grants. And we were very successful there with that in the last year. We secured 1.3 million for the safe routes to school. So we can start the sidewalk project on Mountain View in between Ames Creek and Long Street. We secured the 800,000 for the emergency generators. We got about 17,000 for the police department radio upgrades. And I believe there were some other smaller ones, like I know the library got $2,000 for some things that they were working on as well. So we were pretty successful there. The next slide, and I believe, yeah, the final one for council goals was image building. And the one under there was a city marketing plan. That one, we have not moved forward with the city marketing plan and don't feel comfortable moving forward with that, that we have a clear vision of what we're hoping to achieve here and have a better idea of what we're, you know, the customer that we're trying to attract. So if that is something that council wants to focus on, again, we can talk about that for council goals here in the near future, so. So that's what we have for council goals. Along with that, our previous city manager had some city manager goals for this year. And I just have one slide on that, and I have some, you can see what those all are. So the first one there on the upper left is a 10% increase in library collections and activities. That is complete. Megan has done a phenomenal job at the library. Their activity over there and the number of people who engage with the library over the last year has been phenomenal. She always has something going and has really made a huge positive impact in this community. And I'm really thankful for what she's done there. The second one was obtain a new dais for council chambers. And you're sitting at the dais and it's beautiful. And Public Works did a wonderful job building that. And so that one is complete. The next one on the list is commence the wastewater treatment project. And so that one, we are still waiting to have our audit done and complete and up to date so that we can secure that loan to move forward with the project. Don't see any issues with that. We're just, again, waiting for that audit to get completed and updated so we can get that loan. And we've already been pre-approved for the loan. The next one on there was Police Department Upgrades Phase Two. That, that is in progress right now, nearing completion. So we've had some major updates at the PD, you know, new floors, new paint, as well as storage and cabinetry. And super thankful for, for council letting us move forward with these projects as well as, one of the big things that, that has been a priority for me is health and wellness. And wellness programs are huge nowadays in law enforcement. And so we're also putting in a small gym so people can exercise and, you know, and just contribute to that wellness program. So thankful for that as well. So we're, we're nearing completion with that. The, we've got the paint, the floor done. As far as storage and cabinetry, they're currently building that right now, so. The next one on the list was to formalize the traffic officer position, and that has been completed and very successful. Our traffic officer has been doing a good job out there and has been making a big impact in the community. And I'm sure that you've probably seen that out there. Next was update recruitment and onboard, onboarding process here at the city. That is currently still being worked on, that is still ongoing, and we're continuing to refine that process, so. So yeah, we have Ryan working on that right now. Next on the list was funding for Downtown Plaza and Engineering. That right now is postponed due to staffing and cost and grant priorities. So we're not able to do anything there just because we don't have funding is what it boils down to. Organize and host a citizens academy. We did complete that earlier last year. And then the last one on the list is Festival Street Improvements. So Festival Street, if you're not familiar with that, is our 13th Avenue area there in between Long and Main Street. We just don't have money to put in anything into Festival Street at this time. However, we do, that had, council did approve that to be one way, and we'll be moving forward on that in the near future. So we're moving slowly on Festival Street, but it's, it's a cool concept and cool project. We just don't have funding, so. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So does council have any questions regarding any of this stuff? And if not, that's fine. Yes?
We can't see each other, so when you, when a council member, you want to speak, you, this button here?
This, so yeah, anytime that you want to speak, hit the button, it will light up.
Off right now, is that correct?
Oh, there's that light up?
There, yeah, there's no light, but if you hit it and the button is extended.
So when that light comes on, do you see it as if?
I don't see it.
I don't, I don't.
There's no illuminated light.
Nobody sees it.
Nobody sees it.
How does anybody know that?
You can say. So you'll indicate to the chair that you have a comment, and she'll usually accept in order that, that people.
She can't see me.
Right, you could just speak into your microphone and say, Madam Chair, and then I say.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So like right here, if I have a question for, for our chief manager, as you're going through, like, for instance, say, I want to ask you about 13th Street parking flow. Is there been a design done yet? Is that going to be one-way parking on both sides, angle park? Or how do I ask a question like that?
Yeah, you can just, you can ask that, you just ask it, so.
Okay, so, but you know, we've got a whole, I'm trying to be efficient too. So as we're cruising through here, and so there's, that one happens to be the very last thing. I say, hey, I have a question about that. So I, so do I say to Madam Chair, I have questions? Or Chief, I got questions, or how do we do that?
Chief, if I can butt in, I might have a good answer for you. So first off, we're in a work session right now, and things are, are more relaxed during a work session. So it's mainly just don't talk over other people. And, and that's really the only, the only, we don't, we don't really, we don't handle our, our work sessions under Robert's Rules of Order or something like that. It's, it's more just, you know, Chief was making his presentation of what, what was happening. He's following in his agenda, asks for questions, and it's really, anybody who has a question can just.
As he's going through, I said, Chief, as you finish with, you know, if there's 10 items, you've finished with number seven. I have a question on seven.
Yeah.
Counselor Bronson, can, can I ask you to put the mic directly in front of your mouth?
How's that?
Much better, thank you.
Okay, so I'm wearing these things, so. And I also wear hearing aids, so things are a little bit different, how I perceive things. That's why I like to look and see who I'm speaking to because so much of my communication is what you're saying with your, with your mouth and stuff. So down here, you know, I've had a hand, I don't have a clue, you know, I can't, because I can't see. That's why I, as one of the original things, I said, hey, if we could have this, this, this table, you know, if it flexing, and I know we have code problems and all that, so. You know, I think that's a major handicap for communicating with the seven of us here. So just my thoughts on that, so. I have another question here. Okay, and maybe this is going to be covered by our city attorney. And can you still hear me okay? Am I, okay, so. It's obvious I write a lot. That's just kind of how I retain things, I'm very visual, I like to, you know, put things down. Does this notepad of mine become public information?
Any, any, any documents you create and writing your notes as a document in the course of your work as a city councillor is a public record. Now, whether or not it can be obtained by somebody, there's a process for that. However, you need to treat everything as if it is a public record, which means please retain it and also have it separate from your own personal things. So it, because if it's ever subpoenaed, you're going to have to give somebody that, that pad and removing, you know, removing your personal items from it is going to be almost impossible sometimes. So the best thing is just to keep things entirely separate.
But everything I just scratched down here, but if.
If you put your shopping list on there as well, it's going to be a public record, so.
I wouldn't care, so.
Well, right, for that.
And that's a good point too, because when I'm writing things, and if I don't care if the world knows it, and someone subpoenas and says, what is this talking, you talk, I said, well, that's really my thoughts at the time, so. So I, you know, these are kind of strange, but I'm just asking them.
If you're okay with a bunch of lawyers in a public court, you know, going over your, and trying to decipher whatever you've said, and you don't care whether somebody knows that you needed to buy a dozen eggs, that's perfectly fine.
Right, so, I mean, because that's, I write a lot of stuff in my own shorthand code, so. I don't, I don't care about that, I just want to know what is the extent of the detail, so.
It's, it's definitely.
If it comes in on the pad, it's public record, so, okay, got it, so, thank you.
I believe that he had a question, and I don't know if it got answered about 13th Avenue.
The parking?
The parking, yeah.
Okay, question. Is there a plan already laid out, something in writing?
There is a plan. I'm going to defer to city attorney Larson because I know that he was working on that.
I put on my previous hat. We did have a draft parking plan that was put together. At the same, it was put together at the same time that the 10th Avenue plan was put together. But that plan was not implemented yet for 13th. And essentially to, you can, we can get you a copy. I know Levi's got.
We can save it all, a lot of time, just, you know, 20 seconds, just telling you, is it, you know, if there's something like that.
The main design is it's kind of an S curve where there's parking on one side at one end, there's parking on the other side at the other end, and the, the travel lane meanders between.
Is the parking parallel or?
Parallel, there's, there's some, there's a mixture of parallel and angled parking.
Okay, so.
It's, there's, the design tries to maximize the amount of parking while still addressing some of the fire district's concerns about getting a fire truck through.
Okay, so that, that gives you an idea. Because I use that area, you know, daily, so it's just like, okay, thank you very much.
I do have a question as well regarding the library from the estate. Was that the second installment that they had received?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
That's exciting because the first one was significant as well.
Yeah, I don't remember, I remember it was up there.
I thought it was like 400,000.
Yeah, I was thinking four or five.
This one was higher than expected.
Yeah, yeah, it was, thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting.
Any other question?
Okay, I will hand it off at this point to our assistant city manager.
Thank you. So you all have in front of you a binder. So I just put together a very high-level handbook for all of you. I'm not going to go through it page by page, but I just want to highlight what is in there and where you can find additional resources if what you're looking for is not in the book. So you can see it has table of contents, it has tabs. I will also send this out digitally with links if you prefer to navigate that way. But basically, the front is just a map of Sweet Home, your vision and mission statements, which Chief included a vision statement, a copy of the council goals that we went over. There is a sheet with all of your contact info and your council terms in there. Section three, we do have a high-level org chart, so you can kind of see how we are divided into departments and who reports to whom. And then there's also a sheet with staff, high-level staff contacts for each of the departments. But as you know, the chief is the one who works directly for you, the city council. So the preference is that you go directly through him if you have any questions of staff. Then section five has to do with the way that your meetings are conducted. So it has the agenda order, which is established by your rules, and procedures for various hearings, and then parliamentary procedures, which I know city attorney Larson will go over in some more detail. With those public hearing procedures or land use procedures, if you do end up presiding over one of those, we will always have a script for you, so don't feel like you need to memorize those because they can be complex. Then I would say, section six is very important to review. It starts with the copy of your current council rules. As the chief mentioned, we did have a work session regarding the rules, and we didn't get a ton of direction, but we know it was a council goal for this year. And we've heard feedback that we would like to revisit those. So I would encourage all of you to start reading those. I will say, from my personal perspective, they do seem long, which is maybe why people don't know them intimately. And I also think there are many things in here that might be better suited for other documents. So if you want to take a look and see what you think is actually germane to your duties as councillors, we will be seeking that feedback in a future work session. Then section seven, we just have a roster of our current board committee and commission members and their terms. And then finally, at the end, I just have a really brief narrative of some of the links to our websites and social media where you can find all the meeting information. All of you have been automatically added to our email distribution list that you'll start getting meeting notices to those beginning next week if you haven't already. And then pretty much everything that's in this binder is also available on our website, so I have a link to that. There's a link to our city code. I would recommend, if you don't want to read the whole thing, at least focus on title two, which talks about administration of the city and talks about the division of management and personnel and city council. There, there's also a link to our current and past budgets, if you want to go ahead and review that. Again, our contracted finance director will be here next week to do a high-level overview of our funding structure and our budget. But if you want more details, that's available on the website. The new council members, obviously, have received your laptops, but if you have any issues with those, please work with. please work with Adam. And then on the back page, League of Oregon Cities has a ton of resources and guides, so there's just a link to their website. And I will say, a new law went into effect that all elected officials have to complete ethics training. So there's a link to that page. You are responsible for figuring out how you want to complete that. We will not be hosting that as a work session here, so you can either find an in-person session, sign up for a live training, or I believe you can also do a recorded training. So just make sure you get a certificate. So you just have to complete it one time per term. Yeah, so you have time, but the sooner the better. And honestly, I took it, so I knew what you'd have to go through. It's not that bad. And that's all from me, if anyone has any questions.
Madam Mayor. I thought, I talked with the state of Oregon, and they were going to come out and do a cinema so we all could have done it once instead of doing it individually. Is that not going to be a thing?
Not in Sweet Home, so I know there have been some area ones set up. So you could go on the website and see if that's on their schedule, but they will not be coming to Sweet Home for an in-person training.
Okay.
I will say though, we do have a training scheduled for the second Tuesday in November with League of Oregon Cities. They actually are doing a tailored training for Sweet Home, and that's going to focus on things like council rules, our charter, and again, it's going to be tailored to Sweet Home, so we're getting a little extra attention, which is great.
When is that?
That is, it's going to be a work session before the second meeting in February.
In February?
Yes. I'm sorry.
That's a helpful thing. February will be easy or easier, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, next, I'm going to hand it off to city attorney Larson. He's going to be talking about the Roberts Rules of Order. Excuse me, I don't know if you've ever seen that book. It is thick and kudos to you for condensing this, because I, it's, it's a lot. But anyway, it's important stuff, so I'll hand it off to you.
I, there we go. There is a, there's a ton of resources on the internet for Robert's Rules of Order. And, and most of it is accurate. You know, the, it's, it's like the most popular or the most common way of running meetings for anything from your local HOA up to, you know, US Congress. So it's just very, very common. Go on to the next slide. So I don't, I don't want to bore you to death. I want this to be as, as useful to you and as interesting. Unfortunately, my talents don't lie in making a PowerPoint really that interesting. So I'll try to be verbally interesting and, and kind of point out the, the main points. So first, I'll just do a little introduction on what the heck Robert's Rules of Order are. We'll then talk about roles and responsibility, council meeting structure and process, different types of motions. We'll talk about public involvement. And finally, just a list of common motions, and then we can have any questions that you want. Now, in the middle of this, if you have questions that come up and you don't want to wait to the end, perfectly fine with me, interrupt me, let's, let's talk about it as we go through it. I don't have a problem with that. So. So just to introduce, here's your history. Robert's Rules started in 1876 by US Army engineer Colonel Henry Robert. So he, he was bothered by chaotic meetings and decided to put together some rules that would make things easier for him to deal with. And that kind of blossomed into his whole book of rules. And his family has since made this their, like, mission. And so his great grandson, I think, just died only a couple of years ago. And, and he was, he even made modifications to it, so it's a whole thing. You can have fun with it if you want. They're pretty much the standard for legislative meetings. They are included in our adopted city council rules, which says, in all cases not specifically provided for herein or in the city charter, the council shall be governed by the law and precedents laid down in the then-current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. I think it's like in the 12th edition right now. And we have a copy, I believe, in Cecily's office of that edition. So when it comes to council meetings, they're governed first by the city charter, then by the council rules, and then by Robert's Rules of Order. And so that's kind of the order of priority. All right, why? Benefits of Robert's Rules of Order are that there tends to be justice and courtesy for all, maintenance of order, consideration of one item at a time, which for council meetings is extremely important. All sides can get heard, each member has input, the majority rules, but at the same time, the rights of all members, including the minority, are protected. The drawbacks, it can be slow. It's difficult for newcomers or the public to understand. It can limit the passion or energy in a, in a discussion. And it includes very specific requirements for participants. There's a little bit of a learning curve with it, but it's not intended to be a barrier for you. It's intended to be a tool. And so if you look at it as a tool, I think you'll find much more use out of Robert's Rules. Okay, roles and responsibilities. The mayor is the chairperson at council meetings, or if the mayor is not present, that would be the president pro town, which is the term in our charter, our charter uses for essentially what would otherwise be a vice mayor or deputy mayor, but that's just the term that our charter uses. The mayor follows the agenda to keep the meeting moving, controls the flow of the meeting by recognizing members who wish to speak. To councillor Bronson's point earlier, if you want to speak, it's a matter of getting the chairperson's attention, getting the mayor's attention. And so just vocally, madam mayor, or madam mayor combined with a hand wave in her direction or something like that is usually enough. And in my experience here, that's really all that's been necessary. We don't usually have boisterous enough meetings where that's difficult to, to deal with. But that's just how we've typically, typically done it. The mayor is not required to allow the public to speak, and we'll, we'll cover more of that later. The mayor also models courtesy and respect and insists that others do the same. The role of councillors is to ask the chair to be recognized when they wish to speak. And this also can be a little bit awkward and seem a little passive aggressive, but it's the way that Robert's Rules is done. The role of councillors is to address their comments to the chair, not to each other, and not to the public, and not to staff. It's kind of a weird way, if you think of the city council as a body, and that you're each a limb of the body, and the, the chairperson is the head, it's basically like, everything that that body does is going to go through the head. And so it's the, the hand's going to talk to the head, the other hand's going to talk to the head. The hands aren't going to talk to each other. That's kind of the, the way I think of it, at least. And the reason for that is it, it helps the body to act in a united way. And it also kind of limits conflict, because you're not, you're not arguing with each other. You are making statements to the chair. And that's kind of the, the reason why it's done that way. The role of staff is that staff has to follow the same rules and seek recognition from the chair in order to speak. Under our charter, the city manager can take part in discussions on all matters at council meetings. So typically, staff, in our practice, staff kind of sits here and waits to be asked a question. But the, the city manager is able, is under our charter allowed to chime in at any, at any time. And so, but that doesn't mean that the city manager gets a vote. That just means can participate in discussions. All right. Council meeting structure. As Cecily mentioned in your binders, there's, this is in there. The council rules include this order of business. And, and I haven't seen any change in my time here, but this, this is not necessarily in the charter, so you can, you can adjust this. There starts with a call to order, roll call, the consent agenda, which if you're not familiar, and for those who are new, consent agenda is essentially things that, that are considered to be non-controversial and not really, they're, they're more housekeeping items or things that aren't really something that would be debated about. And the way, anybody who, if you have a problem with anything that's on the consent agenda, all it takes is one person to say, I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda, and it gets added to the regular agenda and, and can be approved that way. But it's, it's essentially a time saver, and you can get stuff done much easier, much quicker. Next is recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. That is really the only public participation part of the meeting, is that, you know, that's, if the public wants to say anything, that's pretty much the time when they're assured that they can say something. Then old business, then new business, then ordinance bills, the first, second, and third readings, reports of committees, reports of city officials, council business for the good of the order, and then adjournment. All right, so the process for council meetings is you follow the agenda using that structure. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, council business for the good of the order. That is a time on the agenda to bring up any business that, that a councillor feels needs to be brought up that is not already on the agenda or hasn't been discussed or is not scheduled for future discussions. That's an opportunity to raise that point. Now, this is, it's council business, right? And so if it's, if it's your, your own personal thought on something, it may not be appropriate to bring that up during that time. If it's something that is a city matter, that is something that the council could decide or something that is within your, the authority of the council, then certainly it's an appropriate item to bring up. It can be kind of fluid. It's not, it's not a, there's, there's not really set categories of what is considered council business for the go-to-the-order. It's more your judgment of what you think is, is appropriate. Now, if you bring up something that you insist is city business and it, and everybody else disagrees, you might find, and we'll talk about this with the Robert's Rules, you might find that you're kind of overruled and that item is tossed out. But for the most part, most, most, in our history that I've seen, most people are pretty good about it and don't really bring up stuff that's that inappropriate. That being said, it's best to kind of think about what you're going to say and make sure that it really is something that the council even has jurisdiction over. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the council meeting, you know, you follow the agenda. The agenda can be modified. So the agenda is, the, the city manager and the mayor typically work together on putting the, the agenda together. And if a councillor wants something different, you know, you can make a motion pretty much almost any time in the meeting. Usually, when that item comes up is when you'd want to make the motion to, to have it be different. But they can be changed. A motion is required for the advancement of most work, and debate and civil discussion is allowed on most motions. Next page, agenda items are introduced as dictated by the agenda or the chair. The only options to get passed an agenda item are either postpone it, table it, move it to a committee, or vote on it. Those are your, you're pretty much your four choices. Typically, agenda items include an initial staff report or a request for council action from staff. And typically, the city manager or the appropriate department head would introduce that matter and provide all the relevant information on that matter. The chair then opens the floor for questions and discussion regarding the staff report or the request. At any time after the staff report, councillors may seek recognition by the chair to make a motion on the agenda item. Typical motions include, I move to approve as recommended, or I move as recommended. Just a word of caution is this can be unclear to the audience or to those who have not carefully read the council packet, because the recommend, every, every request for council action has a list of recommended actions of what you can do or what staff recommends that you do. And so if you just say move as recommended, only somebody who has read through that knows what that actually means. So you can do it. Sometimes it's best to be more clear by actually reading out what the recommendation is. You can move to, you know, another example is I move to approve the item as recommended, but with the following change, or I move to table this item until the next meeting so that staff can provide answers to, you know, then state, state your questions. Every motion typically requires a second. If there's no second, the motion dies. If seconded, the chair then opens the floor for discussion on that motion only. It, it stops all other discussions and you only discuss whatever that motion was. Motions can be amended. And so during the discussion, you can say, I move to amend the motion by, and then whatever change you would like to make. And then that is a second, is another motion that has to be taken care of before you can move on. So that would also have to be seconded, and then you have a vote on it. And then you go back and handle the original motion as amended by that, by that motion. So it can get a little bit squirrely and a little bit, you know, you can lose track of things relatively quickly if you're not paying attention, if, if people take full advantage of what Robert's Rules does. After each councillor is given an opportunity to speak regarding the motion, the chair calls for a vote on the motion. Alternatively, if you don't think the chair is moving fast enough, you can just say, you call for the question. And that forces a vote to end discussion, essentially. So you would, if you say, I call for the question, then you have to have a vote on whether discussion can continue or whether you're going to, you're voting on whether you're going to vote or not. It seems a little bit strange, but that's the way it's done. If the vote on the call fails, then you continue the discussion. If the vote on that call succeeds, then there's no more debate, and you have to vote on the motion that, that is on the table. And then that process is repeated for each agenda item. All right, so as I mentioned earlier, you know, you have a, you can have a motion to amend a motion, and it gets kind of crazy. There are different types of motions. So the main motion is really whatever action the council wants to take. Main motions can't be made if there are other motions being considered already. You have to have kind of a, a clear slate before you can make a main motion. And once a motion is made and seconded, it must be acted upon before moving on. So some examples, I move to adopt resolution blah, 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 blah. Or I move to direct the city manager to investigate blah, 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 blah. Or we need to discuss the exemplary performance of our city attorney. I move to schedule an executive session for that purpose just before our next council meeting. There you go. All right, there are also subsidiary motions. These are motions that kind of change how a motion is being handled. They stop the discussion of the main motion and would make some change on it. So for example, tabling is a subsidiary motion. You could already have, you could have a motion to approve something and a second, and you're having the debate. And during the debate, maybe some questions come up. One of you could say, I've, I moved to table the motion, or I moved to table the motion until such and such a time. That requires, that's basically, you stop discussion and you handle that subsidiary motion before you can move on. Sometimes tabling can be indefinite, and that can effectively kill a motion if it's voted for. Under, when you table a motion, if there is no time specified, it is indefinitely tabled. And it only gets brought, and I'll cover this later on. That, no, no, it, it, you can table things indefinitely. If you, if you don't specify when it's going to come back, it stays there until, I think, two thirds of the, of the council. I, I have it down later in the presentation, but there's this, you, you'd have to have a certain number of people to bring it back.
Counselor Sanchez, could you please use your microphone? Sorry.
So, I mean, to answer your question, my understanding and practice can vary from one board to another. And so if you've had different experience in a different organization in the past, or somebody handles things differently, but. But my understanding of Robert's Rules is that when you table a motion, you can table it until a certain time and then it's brought back at that time. You can also just table it indefinitely. And if you table it indefinitely, it essentially stays on the metaphorical table until it's voted on to bring back. And let's see. It just takes a majority vote to do that. Now, to bring it back, you can, you just need a majority to bring that item back up. So if you, if somebody, I guess that the takeaway here is, if there is, if somebody moves to table an item and doesn't specify a date, you need to keep that in mind when you're deciding whether or not to vote for tabling that. And you may decide instead, "Well, I'd like to amend that subsidiary motion to say, 'Let's table that until our next meeting.'"
Thank you.
And then that would bring it back up.
Thank you.
Yeah. Or if that doesn't happen and later one of you wants to bring it back, you can just say, you know, take, you know, say during council business for the good of the order, you could say, you know, "I move to re, to..." What was the wording? I was just looking at it. "I move to take from the table the item that we discussed earlier about such and such." And if you get a majority of people to vote with you, then it gets brought back. And you, and you bring it up again. So. Any other questions before we move on? So other subsidiary motions are, I mentioned, call for the question earlier. It closes debate. That, unlike some of the others, that requires two thirds majority to pass. You can, you can have a subsidiary motion to limit or extend debate. You can have one to refer to a committee or to postpone to a specific time. You can have one to amend the motion or postpone indefinitely. Some of these are kind of interchangeable. Like you could postpone indefinitely is kind of the same as tabling. But you can reverse a lot of these as well. But the main point is subsidiary motions, you kind of interrupt the main motion you're talking about, take care of that subsidiary motion, and then you go back to that main motion if applicable. All right. The next kind of motion are incidental motions. And these are kind of just housekeeping things. And they are in order at any time and they take precedence over, over the main and the subsidiary motion. So things like point of order. This is something that's used to bring the group's attention to a rule or a procedure that's being violated. It's not really a motion, but it requires the chair to make a motion. So if you see, you know, you could say something like, "Point of order, there was no second to that motion and so we shouldn't be debating it yet." And then you'd go back and verify probably with the note taker that there was no second and deal with that problem. You can also appeal the decision of the chair. That allows the rest of the council to overrule the mayor on some decision made at the meeting. Parliamentary inquiry is just to kind of question whether you're doing things the right way. Point of information is, you know, if in the middle of a motion, if you have some information about the item that you think needs to be brought up or that there's a staff member that you, that has, you believe has some information and you want that brought out, you can say, "Point of information," and then bring up that question. You know, it should be something relevant to the topic at hand. And you can also request to withdraw a motion. Once a motion is made and seconded, it cannot be withdrawn without a majority vote, even if you're the person who made the motion. It's on the table, it's being considered, and you have to have a majority vote to get rid of it. You can also object to consideration of a question. Somebody makes a motion that you think is just totally out of order, inappropriate, shouldn't be discussed, then you can object to it. If a majority agrees with you, it's done. All right. There's also renewal motions. So you can reconsider an item, take it from the table as we mentioned before. You can also rescind. That's used to annul a previous action. This one's a little tricky because if you want to rescind something, you need to give notice to the rest of the group. And the reason for this is that, you know, if somebody voted on something in one meeting and then is not able to attend the next meeting, you know, they don't have any notice that somebody's going to come and reverse whatever they voted for. And so if you're going to rescind, you got to give notice about it. Now, if you, if you don't have notice, then it's two thirds majority needs to pass that rescind. So if you want to, in the same meeting that you're in, if you want to rescind something that was done earlier in that meeting, you know, obviously, I guess you're kind of giving motion in that everybody's there present, but it's not really giving anybody any time, but you just barely decided on that. And so if you can get two thirds majority to vote with you, then you can reverse something that happened in that same meeting. But it does require a super majority there. Finally, there are questions of privilege. And this is just stuff that's, you think of it as for the comfort of the group. They're things that are just for your, making things more pleasant to be on the board. You could adjourn. You know, if the meeting has just gone on too long and everybody needs to go home and rest, you can move to adjourn. A recess, temporary break. Motion is always appropriate to have a recess for a little while. Especially helpful if you really need to use the bathroom and you don't want to say so in the public meeting. Point of privilege is to bring up a matter that concerns the welfare of the group. You know, you could say, "Point of privilege, can we turn the heat on in here?" Or if you recognize, if there's something that you see that is a danger that you want to alert people to, you know, that certainly you can stop discussion to bring that up. And then call for, call for the orders of the day is just to essentially return to the agenda. If you think things have gotten off track and there's too many tangents being discussed, then you just say, "I call for the orders of the day," and that brings the group back to the agenda. And that doesn't require a second. It's not debatable and no vote is required because all you're doing is just saying, "Hey, we're out of line here. Let's get back to the business of the meeting." All right. What about the public? Because these are public meetings after all. And I should clarify that. They are public meetings in that they're open to the public. They're not public meetings in that the public gets to participate in any way they choose. And a lot of times in our culture, we think of things like town hall meetings and we see stuff on TV where people just go in and say their piece. It doesn't really work that way. This, the purpose of the council meeting is to take care of council business, to take care of city business. And that should be in the interest of the public, certainly. But it doesn't necessarily involve the public's input. It can involve the public's input if you wish, but it doesn't have to. And that's, that's, that's why we have portions of the meeting for the, you know, hearing of petitions and things like that. But when it comes to any discussion on items, it's for the council to discuss, not for the public to discuss. Residents should not expect to have any participation in the meeting beyond any public comment periods. And they also should not expect any direct interaction from the council during the meeting. Because this, again, it's a council meeting. It's for counselors to talk to each other, not for counselors to talk to the public. Robert's Rules do not exist to make things clear to audiences. In fact, they often do the opposite. They exist to make things easier and fairer for counselors during council meetings. That doesn't mean we need to be jerks about it, but we can just specify, "Hey, this is, this is for council business right now." And, you know, undoubtedly, you're going to have times when people are upset with what you're saying or you hear some grumbling from the audience. The main thing to keep in mind is, one, that's one loud person. We don't know how that, how many others in the community feel that same way. And two, they're not on the council. You don't even know if they even live within city limits because these are, it's open to anybody who wants to come. And so, yes, bad behavior can be frustrating to deal with, but we don't need to, we don't need to pay attention to it unless you agree also that it's a problem and that something needs to be discussed. Now, we do want to encourage people to have appropriate behavior because interrupting a public meeting doesn't really help. Doesn't help you get your business done and it doesn't really help them communicate very well. If you think that you want to hear more from the public on that item, you can ask, you can call for a public hearing on something and have public input. Certainly, that's certainly within the council's job description to either you on your own meet with constituents or ask that there be a time in the meeting to allow for public comments on a particular item. That's really up to you. But it does need to be done in order and as dictated by the agenda. Any questions on that? Okay. All right. Common motions. You can introduce a main motion. "I move to..." blank. You can't, there's some things you can interrupt the current speaker with. Most things you can't. Most things require a second. Most things are debatable and most things can be amended and most are governed by a majority. But every once in a while, you have a couple of things that aren't debated or are not, can't be amended. And usually, these are self-explanatory. So you can amend motions, move items to committee, postpone items, call for the question, point of order. I included these mainly, and you can have a copy of this PowerPoint if you ever want to go back and take a look and remind yourself. I also have a couple of handouts that I passed out earlier and that kind of give the gist of what your options are. But I wanted to include it in the PowerPoint as well for you to review. So you can object, move to, move for a recess, adjourn. Requesting information is point of information. You can appeal this chair's decision. You can increase the amount of time that you debate something or were asked that the rules be enforced or, as we discussed earlier, table something. And I think that's kind of it. Any, any questions? Sorry, it can be a dry subject. But, and it doesn't have to be, again, don't, don't see it as a, as a club to use against each other or as a hindrance to the what you want to do. But just see it as a, as a tool for making sure that you get everybody's input and you do things in an orderly fashion, one thing at a time.
Thank you. Yeah.
Sure.
Any questions of counselors? Or soon to be counselors? So is that all that we have for tonight?
That is all we have. I want to thank everyone for coming out for this training. We just wanted to get some of you acclimated and what we've been working on, what we've been doing and kind of prepare you for what's to come. So thank you so much.
Yeah, I appreciate everybody coming out, too. I think it's really important that we know how to engage so that we can make some good decisions and get everybody's opinions heard upfront here. I also just want to say thank you to all who are new. I'm really excited about your presence here. And I've been told many times before that we should allow people that live outside of city limits, that means those that don't pay taxes in the city, to be able to be on council because we want to be able to find quality people in city limits. And I just want to say, we proved them wrong. We have quality people here. So thank you so much. So on that, we'll end the meeting at 6:35.